It is 6:30 and we are here for a study session. So, I will call it to order and we can do a roll call.
Pledge of Allegiance first.
Nope, Pledge of Allegiance first. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the land of the free and the wise.
Hell, if we get a roll call.
Certainly. Councilperson Bear. Councilperson Bear?
Here.
Dupree?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Salcedo?
Here.
Zor is not here yet. Tobin?
Here.
And Mayor Higgins.
Here.
All right, we're here for a study session to look at some things. I'm going to just turn it over to the city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We're here tonight to talk about a possible restructuring of the way our code enforcement program is here in the city. I had sent out last week a report that I've been working on after we've been having some internal meetings and discussions about ways in which we could change up the program. So, kind of high-level summary here, of course, code enforcement is a function of local government. It's a very important part protecting property tax, protecting health and safety of residents, and it's a quality of life issue. In our city, we have all of our code enforcement split up between two different departments. And this, not a terribly uncommon way, I've seen other communities where it's somewhat similar, where a lot of code enforcement falls to the police department and then maybe some commercial code and rental code falls under a building department. Ours is even a little bit more where we have a lot more, in our situation, more code enforcement that comes under the building department than you would typically see when you also have the police department enforcing blight and other code like that. But so, for the most part, our Police LP Pride program enforces a lot of the, what I'm going to call, environmental code. So, things like tall grass, garbage rubbish on property, general property maintenance issues. But they also handle abandoned vehicles, parking enforcement, as well as animal control. And animal control, I'm pretty certain by state statute, falls under police departments. So, that's something that naturally is going to live there. Whereas our building department handles enforcing the commercial code, the rental code, the registration inspection, vacant building registration, the sign ordinance, other building-related issues, things like tarps on roofs, garage doors being broken, anything that, at the end, will require a building permit is typically under the jurisdiction of the building department. So, really, we have, in the LP Pride program, we have three LP Pride code enforcement officers. They also handle animal control, they also handle parking, and then we've got one person who kind of is the, I don't want to say brains of the operation, but the glue that holds it all together. And then, our building department, all the inspectors are able to enforce, but there is one person who is full-time through our contract that is there to enforce the code. So, over the, you know, over the decades, and this isn't uncommon in our general area, but we've had a ton of issues with blight, you know, and there's a lot of different reasons for that, I'm not going to get into it. But, it seems as though our code enforcement program, being staggered, isn't quite meeting the standards that have been, that are being set by the council, as far as the feedback we keep receiving. And so, I wanted to focus on the fact that the program's split and the one, the program that handles the majority of the things that you're really going to notice, the tall grass, the accumulation of garbage and everything, is also handled by the department, they handle animal control, that also handles the parking enforcement, and it's a lot, right? And so thus, we don't get to do a ton of proactive code enforcement. One of the major ways we can address this is by changing up the way we do code enforcement, creating a single department that handles all code, separating the parking enforcement and animal control away from code enforcement. So, the code enforcement, in this theory, what we're looking at is code enforcement would be a function of the building department, solely responsible to our building official, parking and animal control still under the police department. It would require two code officers in the building department, as well as somebody coordinating everything. We would still maintain two code enforcement officers. At this point, though, they'd be parking an animal control within the police department. The goal here would be that our building department code enforcement officials will be able to go around proactively patrolling, looking for blight. When they receive calls for complaint, the, our critical task is that they'll be not only addressing the blight right in front of them, but that whole block. Kind of a much more proactive approach than we've been doing, and this, it's an increase of service level, right? So, this will come with some increased costs. And so, I'm going, the implementation of this does have some obstacles, and I'll get into the cost in a minute. But the first is the physical location. The building department needs more space if we're going to do this. There's going to be, they already intend to do some minor modifications within, within the building. They're going all digital with their files, which then they'll be able to actually use that filing system elsewhere in the city. I believe the police department was looking, looking at something for it, which will then free up space there. There's also been talk of knocking down that wall between, if you've been in there, that wall where the files currently are housed, knocking that wall down to open up more space. And then, potentially, what we in the city tend to refer to as the DDA area, this is currently where the Chamber of Commerce has an office, the farmer's market has an office, Kerry has some space, but essentially shifting some stuff around, probably knocking down a few walls to make some other arrangements for space. And John, John's kind of got a slightly master plan in his head that he'll be able to explain better. Again, this is not insignificant because this then will come back to that cost. The second implementation obstacle is we're going to need equipment, again, coming back to cost. There's going to be a need for desks, computers, technology, vehicles for code enforcement. And that, you know, again, comes back to cost. The major obstacle all relates to cost. But then, again, increasing the staff is going to be necessary. We will need to hire at least one, one more full-time for the code enforcement, but then also, there are some duties that still fall under the LP Pride program that will be shifted more into the police. They're talking about running the auctions, the, all the towing stuff. So, that will require more, more work within the records department. Currently, they've got two full-time, two part-time. The chief believes that this would require one of those part-time to become full-time. So, again, overall, the costs are the major obstacle. We're looking about $20,000 at least for renovations to the building to make this all work. We'd be talking about $77,000 for the vehicles, the equipment, the furniture fixtures, equipment and technology. And then, there's going to be personnel costs that will be about $135,000 annually that will be an increase. Again, of course, there's going to be an increase, we're talking about an increase to the service level we can provide. We're not going to be able to do something better with what we have in order to increase the service, it's going to, going to have to cost some money. So, this is, this is kind of where we're at as far as a decision point, because we haven't put a ton of work into, you know, creating drawings for what the building would look like, working with the chamber and the farmer's market if we do have to make other arrangements. But we wanted to bring this to you. Again, this is one of your goals, and so, we've done a simple study at looking at what we could do differently, and we're kind of at the point now, do you want us to start moving forward and really looking at this more in-depth, more with harder costs, and really doing a full, full deep dive and getting this prepared to, to be approved, not approved? So, we have tonight John Myers, building, building official, we've got Chief Ray Waters, we also have a couple others there, we've got Pat, we've got Scott LaViss, and then we've got Jennifer Richardson from HR, we've got Lisa Griggs, finance, to answer any questions you guys might have on this.
Is it the chair?
You asked first.
Okay. I like the sounds of it, I really do, especially improving the level of service. It almost seems a little bit of a wash, though, because if, at the police department, we already have the, the animal control trucks, right? So, I know we, we would need trucks for, or not trucks, but vehicles for ordinance on the building department side, but our inspectors right now, what do they use, their own vehicles?
So, the McKenna, the McKenna group, yeah, they do use their own vehicles, I think. McKenna does some kind of mileage reimbursement. And we're not talking about putting this into our contractor's lap, right? We're not going to be asking McKenna to be doing any more.
Good.
We're ask, we're talking about our own Lincoln Park code enforcement program.
Okay, okay. I guess the other, the other concern that I have, though, is, right now, we have three, three LP Pride officers, right? And if we're taking duties away, how, how do we justify full-time, I guess, for, for them?
So, there wouldn't, if we, if we go this route, we wouldn't have three code enforcement officers in the LP Pride program. We would go down to two under LP Pride, and honestly, it, this really does kind of signify the end of the LP Pride program as, as we conceptualize it. This would be the creation of, essentially, a animal control and parking enforcement unit within the police department. It'd be, as we've talked, two officers, likely two who are already there, and then moving two off, two of those, or one of those, whatever, however it works, over to the building department to focus solely on all code.
Okay.
So, we would, and then adding, sorry, and then adding one more full-time.
We will add another one, because the building department already has one, right?
So, we would, the goal is to maintain the one contracted and then increase by two.
So, is there a way to track right now? Because, in honesty, we haven't had the privilege of looking at the Pride reports. So, is there a way to track these calls that are coming in, in category, you know, like parking, the dog ones, right now, I guess it would be for the snow shoveling, whatever, whatever calls are coming in for Pride? Is there a way to, to start tracking those so that we can, we can see if truly, you know, if we were going to deep dive it?
Mm-hmm.
I want to know that we are going to need full-timers.
Okay. Yeah, I'm pretty sure we can categorize what each call has been.
Okay.
I'm looking at the chief, I'm pretty sure there's a fairly easy way to do it.
I know chief does it for, for the Public Safety Commission, he categorizes things, so I'm hoping it's not too much work. But I think that that will, that will help. And I know that part of that is the reactive part, and we want to be more proactive, so I know we need to allow time for that. So, I, I think we're, we're on a good, good pace, or a good idea here.
Is it the chair? I'd like to hear what Chief Waters has to say about this and his feelings and his involvement about splitting and moving and designating some of what he does now to the building department.
I definitely think it's, it could work, it's just a matter of cost, you know? So, we would keep two ordinance people, or, yeah, ordinance, it'd be parking and animal control, and then one person would go over and he'd hire another person there. The other issue would be, we would need to have whoever was at City Hall working would have to be the emergency person for animal control also. So, if something happened where I had two, my two animal people down, then that emergency person that worked at the building could fill in in emergency situations. Other than that, it's just a matter of cost.
I have concerns about, you know, you're saying basically eliminating the Pride program as we know it and creating this new thing. I just have a feeling that if we don't have the Pride program anymore and we're getting the reporting to police and to the building, and it's not actually a police department thing, that people are going to be less responsive in their actions when they go out and they're told of something. I mean, it's always been associated with the police department, and I would hate for people to just think, well, the police department's not involved in this, it's the building department, so we're not going to be as responsible or, you know, react as well because they're not the police department.
Well, and you may have that initially, but when people don't respond and don't, don't act on the citations they receive, John's department will be authorized to issue violations and tickets just like they do now for the things they are enforcing. It's just adding the different, different types of codes they're enforcing.
The building department officers will be, they will not be police officers, they will just be?
They will, no, they'll be, no, they are now.
Okay, the ordinance officers that work through the police department, though, they, they, I mean, are our guys going to go out in uniforms, are they going to have the authority the same way as the guys that work for the ordinance now, or for Pride now? I just, I just kind of feel like everything's been rolling this way and we start to see things pick up and getting a better response time than we've had in the past. And now, we're going to split it all up, and I don't want to get pushed back because of all these changes. And, you know, people, well, I sent you an email last week about what somebody said about the ordinance officer, you know?
Yeah.
That kind of thing is just, you know, that weighs on your mind because you want, you obviously can see that there's some effect going on for the cause that they're doing, and if we split it all up like this, and then the cost is, that's quite a bit of cost, you know?
There's also another side to that as well, where sometimes some people are a little more responsive to somebody walking up in a city of Lincoln Park Polo than they are somebody in a uniform. I've seen it.
And I'm going to assume, if you may, I'm going to assume that if somebody in a Lincoln Park Polo walks up and they, they feel that they're at a problem, they can call backup for the police, just like we do now?
They'd have to call on the phone, yeah. They wouldn't have a police radio with them.
They have to make sure that we keep our guys safe.
Oh, absolutely.
Whatever department they're working out of, they have to be kept safe, too.
Right, right.
And, and this isn't a new thing under the sun, having civilian code enforcement. This is done in a lot of other communities. If you're going to do it now, is the time to do it before the spring season starts.
Do we have all this done before spring?
It could be tough. It could be tough. We might be shooting to be having this in place for next spring, but if we kick the can down the road and not even start working on it, you know, then we're not going to be ready next spring either.
And what if the, the Pride coordinator that works out of the police department now, is she part of this equation? Is she going to be moving to the building? Is she going to be staying with you?
She's not going to be moving.
She's not?
No. I don't know, I don't know what she's going to do. She doesn't want to move over, so she's threatened to retire if this goes forward at this point, so I don't know what's going to happen with her.
It's just somebody that's been here that, that long.
Long time, yeah.
Kind of show a respect to that, too, because she's not quite at retirement yet, either.
No.
She's got a little ways to go and, you know, so, okay, that's my two cents.
And that brings up my question. Right now, if somebody has a problem, we tell them, call Pride. Who will we call? Do they call the building department? Do they call the police department? Do we still have a Pride person who will put the order in the right where it needs to be?
Yeah.
How will that work?
Yeah, this whole thing is predicated that there will be a person housed, you know, all day at the building department that you can call, and that person will then contact the code enforcement personnel that are out on the road.
So, then the other officers that will now be at the police, will somebody be there to pick up those calls, or will that now be handled at the station?
You're talking about for the animal control?
For animal control and parking.
Yeah, that would, that would have to go through the police line.
Still the chair, I don't, so, okay, I'm going to be all over the board on this one, because for the goals and objectives, I know Jason and Eric wasn't involved with that, I didn't make it to that event, so I'm kind of a little behind on that. But whenever I've called LP Pride, they've responded. Is there a disconnect between LP Pride? And there was also talk about, three years ago, about if we added another code enforcement person, that would almost pay for itself in regards to issuing tickets and, you know, for illegal parking on snow days and stuff, and I know that really didn't go nowhere. So, my question is, and I don't know who can answer this, but it appears there's a disconnect somewhere, and I'm trying to pinpoint where the disconnect is. Is LP Pride not looking up to its standards? Is the building department overwhelmed? Is the police department? Can they handle the calls, or am I making any sense? Where's the disconnect that I'm, I'm missing?
So, I don't think that it's so much a disconnect. You're right, LP Pride is very responsive and does a very good job of being responsive. The issue is being proactive. Because they're, they're, they're receiving so many calls, right? They're receiving the tall grass right now, you know, snow, but they're also receiving all those animal control and parking enforcement, they don't have the time to simply patrol and find the, find the code violations without having a call come in, right?
So, and this, this proposal here, it's going to alleviate all that?
It's at least a start, for sure. Separating, a segregation of duties from animal control and parking enforcement away from code enforcement should open up some more time for the code enforcement officials to be able to go and proactively look for issues.
So, my last issue here is, I don't, I know the police department gets multiple calls, when you do your reports, you get thousands of calls, I know that. But in regards to animal control, and we don't see the Pride reports, I don't know who's getting the phone calls in, where, that's what I'm trying to pinpoint, where are we lacking in all the phone calls that we get? What aren't we addressing as a city? Why is this change going to fix everything? That's what I want to, that's what I'm trying to get to right now. If anyone can respond to that question, that's what I like to, because I think LP Pride's doing a fine job. The police department's obviously handling a lot of phone calls, but how is this going to make things better, knocking down walls and adding a new person here, and this person is going to take the phone calls and, you know, if someone else wants to chime in, that's where I'm, to the chair.
With which, where you're going right here with this, if we got another ordinance officer, wouldn't that alleviate some of the things? I mean, if, if they can't handle the law and we put another officer in instead of tearing down walls and doing all this expense, doing the expense of another officer, how much would that alleviate? And how much would that move us further towards our goals? Instead of doing all this and, and shaking it all up so severely with no guarantees that how long it's going to take till it's up and running and it's running smoothly and we're getting, getting effect out of it?
You'll still have those, if we add a fourth, right, a fourth to the Pride program, you'll still have all four of them who essentially are responsible for animal control, parking, and then the environmental blight. What they don't respond to calls on are the tarps on roofs, the garage doors that are broken, you know, the various building, building issues of code enforcement.
So, is there a reason why the building department can't just have a, one officer that does that and work out of there? I mean, one person moving into the building department instead of everybody moving into the building department seems to me like would be a lot, lot less expense.
Well, you'd still have, in fact, adding one person to Pride as well as then adding another person to code in the building department would be increased expense from where we're proposing.
Well, we wouldn't have to add somebody to Pride if we put somebody in the building department to handle the building ordinances. It'd be separate, they'd be doing building ordinances, and that's would be all they would be focusing on.
And a part of the issue is the segregation of the code enforcement, right? So, if, if somebody gets a call for this house that has tall grass, but also has a garage door that doesn't meet with the IC, the International Code Council's IPMC, they're not going to write both things.
What we want, if I could, when we talked about the hotel and, and Chief Waters went in, and Chief Waters, knowing what he knows, identified other issues, but being out of his scope, he had to call the fire chief, he had to call the building department. So, I think what, what we're trying to do is have all those residential issues all in one place. So that when that inspector goes out, or officer, whatever we want to label them, he'll be able to identify everything that he sees, and he will be in authority to write those up.
And I, what would be the difference in responsibilities for the current McKenna ordinance officers and the ordinance officers that we would be adding as a city ordinance officer?
So, I'm going to let John weigh in a little bit here on this, but the idea is, what McKenna does won't change it. They're going to continue doing the same stuff they're doing.
Can I go back to a couple steps and then I'll get to yours? We're talking, one of them, the financial issues. In confirmation with our CDBD director, one of the concerns we have with retaining all of the inspections out of code enforcement of LP Pride is that the revenue that is scheduled for government-use money spending has to be eliminated because if they're not going to govern out of the 2015 IPMC code in what they do at a percentage of what they get their salaries out of CPG, will not be able to be continued. So, if they come into our building department, that revenue becomes available for half of the salary of the, the office administrator and half of both of the officers that are in the field. So, you're offsetting your costs for salaries right off the bat. And because if you were here back in the day, part of the request from a former manager was to put IPMC books and documentation in their hands, so that would make that even more authorized by government revenue spending. So, part of that money is going to be available to the offset. Also, in the long term of the, the building department versus the police department to address, and I'm going to change the word from code to code to code, I'm just going to address the word blight, the city's value of taking care of property for the building department. department's legal responsibility is to take care of life, health, safety, and wellness of all people inside buildings in all parcels. So over 17,000 parcels. Our responsibility is to take care of buildings and land masses that would protect the unity of the entire community, one property versus a neighborhood versus street at a time until safety is made available. And so that gives you a different reason for bringing all of your code enforcement for structural or blight under one roof instead of splitting it. So there's my answer to you about how to divide and why. Number two, the financial director can probably tell you better than I, but we either need to pay attention to my ability to manage or we need to reduce prices because we're only allowed to make what we can spend. And when we get a fund balance that's too large, then we need to either cut back on what we're doing or cut back on our fees. And so since I've been here on a full year cycle and ever since then, we have met all of our budgets in the black. That means we do have in our department more revenue that could offset the cost of other expenses that would bring this program into the building department without oversetting and ma- making a, a large step a problem for the general funds. So we'd have offsetting cost abilities to strengthen the use of more manpower in a more directive purpose. So the question of what the, the McKenna building code enforcers doing presently wouldn't change because, in fact, if you're aware or not, I don't know, but that has only been activated a year and a half ago. Prior to that, they didn't have anybody in the department as a code enforcer exclusion. That was added without changing fees by McKenna for the purpose of trying to clean up some of the issues in the neighborhoods about a year and a half, two years ago. And the difference we're doing also that might be stronger support for the current longevity and the property values is our department has the ability where the police is short-staffed enough and cannot. Anything that we write as a ticket that they don't pay for is a ticket we go to court in person for. So everything that we're going to address in residential property maintenance now, we will stand in front of a judge and get them to speak to us and we will speak on behalf of the city to answer and request the, the courts to enforce the ordinance that we have. They will not only do IPMC, they will be responsible to 1480, which is our ordinance that has given our, the city full rights to the 2015 IPMC. They will be able to learn and address 1476, which is our sign, our, our ordinances that are in complexity between residential, commercial, industrial, and, and business fencing, which is mixed all over the place. So they'll be able to address those violations and structures that we have. They'll also then be able to address now the code 1486, which is our commercial code, which is now separated and has been verified since 2004 that we can have a stronger tooth in our commercial businesses for addressing our blights where businesses have been vacant for a long time and not cleaned up. We have a stronger teeth in a 2000, in a 1486 because it doesn't have to stay as a civil, it can address it as a misdemeanor. So they'll have to address those. The other two ordinances that we will train and equip them with to support the cleaning of the business and the residential districts is 1400 and 1444. One is unsafe structures and one will be dangerous building structures. So they'll be able to do that on, on a very intentional basis by yet being given jurisdictional districts in the city, one person at a time. And every so many months, whether it's six, nine, 12, or 18, we'll rotate those staff so that another set of eyes look, a fresh look at what might be blight and be able to continue to answer the phone calls, but also develop a long-term game plan to eliminate it without waiting for a phone of complaints. And so there's the five guidelines that we think we can give you a very strong, healthy relationship and then leave the, the police department back to utilizing the animal control and therefore the new animal housing structure that we're putting together and give them full concentration on it. Also, all the parking issues that you guys hear on a regular basis because they haven't gotten there because of garage, garbage pickup, sweeping of leaves and snow removal, they'll have a much more concentrated attention to that. And they also drive the, the lean program, which allows them to do that, which it does not permit the building department. And so as the code enforcers come to the building department, we will not operate on lean, so we'll need to respect and give them any violation of parking issues that they find, back to them to come back and re-support. As right now, they're doing the reverse. Every time they get a call that's complaining about a building issue, they just transfer it to our building. So it just goes right to my phone and I pick it up and we begin to look at it anyhow. So we're just trying to cross those paths and keep both departments on a very clean, 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 clear path of what they're supposed to do and support each other on the big picture.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Mr. Myers, what kind of training are they going to get?
Which is proposed, we would give them an hour a day for the first week even before they walk into the building so they understand how to operate, whether it's the office personnel or the officers, telling them how just that BSNA works. So we have them concentrated, an hour of training, they'll have homework assignments so they can figure it out, practice, and the next morning they'll have another hour training for five days. So the first thing they want to do is make sure they know how we need them to create, operate the BSNA software system. Second of all is then to give them, once they get on board, to give them time to understand chapter three of the 2015 IPMC and how that looks. We already have that checklist and I believe 80% of the letters previously created and developed already for both code enforcement as well as signs, as well as commercial buildings, already written. So now we'll need to train them of how to interpret those signs, how to interpret those violations, and then go and enforce them. And then number three, we'll have to teach and require them, if they don't already know, how to create tickets for their, their district so they can be submitted properly to the court so we can meet the court's software program and then be available to speak to them in a public court hearing as it, and if it comes up. Once they get on board with the fundamental training, then we'll work for the next three months to be available to, I see a unique situation, how do I create it? And so my office, myself in person, will make sure that the software is a checklist system like you've seen for our Rumpel program that we created since we've been here. We'll do the same thing for them to have a clear fundamental guideline for them to check it off, understand it, and then be able to interpret it with, with a, a comment by the officer going back forward.
So they don't need to be state certified?
No, they do not.
So, the CBGG funds you're talking about and the fund balance in the building department that's in a good place right now, him talking about sharing the revenue for these, this what we're proposing, is that figured into the costs you just gave us?
The costs that have been given are just the direct costs. We have to be careful when we talk about the building department fund balance because it is, it's a restricted fund balance, right? It, it's restricted by the Construction Code Act, what it can be used on. So, we don't want to, we haven't even dove into what we could use it for in this program, if anything. A CDBG, I do know that some of the funds haven't been able to be used because of the way we've been doing the code enforcement program. How much? I'm not certain. We didn't look much on that, that side at this point, right? This is, again, like I said, we're kind of at that decision point. Do we want to move forward with further study and, and prepare a full proposal and, and move forward or do we want to pull back and just do something different?
Can I ask you another question? When I think of, because it's in the packet that we're moving forward with the animal shelter, right? And it's going to be much larger than what we're used to, what are we thinking long term as far as animal control officers for, for the animals, for a bigger animal shelter? Will the, you know, do you think, chief, that we're going to need more? No? Okay.
Yeah, because the size of the animal shelter is not likely to increase the amount of calls animal control's getting.
But they are going to get cats too now, right?
Yeah. Again.
If I may finish.
But again, segregating the duties better provides more time for animal control.
Okay.
A question, to my mind, we're going to hire our own people, not rolling on, on McKenna. We're having a hard time finding people for all of our positions. Are we going to have a hard time finding these positions?
We could, absolutely. That's, again, I, I put that down. That is one of the obstacles to implementation is being able to actually fill the positions.
Okay. Thank you. So, I heard chief says this could work and you, we said we probably should start it now. Mr. Myers, there was a great little presentation there. It sounds like your department can handle this. So, with respect to all the work that you guys done, if I could see this on paper, instead of just, you know, the way, what you just outlined right now is much more comprehensible for me now, instead of just throwing this work study. So, I would like to move forward, but I'd like to see something more in writing in regards to what walls we're knocking down, how much you can actually absorb financially and that would probably help to face some costs. So, if I could see more in writing, I'm all on board. I know you took a lot of time to, to come up with this. So I'm, I'm going to say that I'd like to see a little more in detail, but I'm willing to move forward.
If I may, Mayor, in respect to the city manager's clarification, I want to clarify my point of making, the fact that we have a fund balance that's sitting there. What I'm saying is, we could modify our budget to meet a higher budget than we have now because we have demonstrated in the past that we can bring more than our, our budget allows. In other words, in our last years, we, we, so if we needed to, and with the assistance of the financial director and the city manager, we could modify our, our building department budget and probably still meet the demand by putting more staff on the department because we have demonstrated a fund balance capability. So we could maybe get a less fund balance capability in the future, but we should have enough revenue is what I was trying to refer to, that we can demonstrate that we can put a dollar amount higher on it. So maybe we would change our budget and therefore meet that demand without being any more tax to the general budget.
To the chair?
Sure.
One thing I want to say is that I, I'm a strong believer in promoting loyalty and so if, I don't want to see an employee that's been here a long time, you have to move out. You know, if there's a way we can make this all work, you know, I, I believe in keeping employees, you know, that have been loyal to the city, you know, and keeping them, not, you know, this where she might leave or whatever, she has to come over here. I don't, to the chief, there would be enough calls between dog runs and parking violations, she would still stay busy, correct?
Yes, we would still need an additional records person.
Okay.
Full-time, yeah.
I just, I just wanted to make that clear that, you know, I want to keep employees. I don't, you know, with this always having to find new people, I, if somebody's devoted to us, we should return that. They've been loyal to the city, should stay in the city. That's just in.
Anybody else have anything else they want to ask or say?
If I could, if I could just add to Councilman Zor's comments, when, when we talked about moving a couple of the offices from the Parks and Rec Building, the CDBG stuff into City Hall, there was a lot of backlash for that too. But if you go down there and see the office that Joan is in, she's got more room than she did at Parks and Rec. And I think, I, I don't want to speak for her, but I think she's happy.
I, I just wanted to make a point, that's all. I, I don't want to lose any more employees.
Of course, of course. None of us do. None of us do.
Especially somebody that's been here that long.
I do also want to make a point, and I, I think I can speak for everybody, that we are, the Pride people who have been doing this, the people who take the calls, the people going out there, doing, doing the job, we are not saying that they are not working, they are working hard and we know that. That is not what this is about. This is about trying to figure out a way to make things done better. That's all. Taking the next step. That's all.
Absolutely.
And I want to make that very clear.
So, if I could, James, are we seeing any, any more interest in the job postings that we have?
Well, so, I have to, have to announce that our fire department is fully staffed as far as budgeted positions.
Okay.
We've got, we've got the last spot filled. I think, they both should be counted as manpower in about a month. So, that's fantastic. I think the police department's still a couple shy, one, two? One. So we're getting close there. DPS, we're still having some issues. We, yeah, we just hired a new one, but, you know, we have them leave and then it's, sometimes it's spinning circles, but, but yeah, we, we're getting, applications are coming in a little better than they had been, say, a year and a half ago. So I think that's positive, for sure.
Good, good. Well, then I say we move forward too.
In a study session, I'm correct, do we do now, take a vote?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's no need to vote. Honestly, it, it seems the consensus is that there's enough interest in at least continuing to push forward with studying it.
Yeah, I'd like to see some, some financials on it.
Didn't want to go through a whole bunch of additional work at this point with, it was just something we weren't even interested in. That was kind of the point here.
At the very least, we'd like to see the financials and see what's from there. Okay, if anybody has.
Just give us something solid.
Staff time, that's all. That's all we're spending.
Okay. And reports that we give already to the police board so that we can see how things break down so that we will see that, that would be nice too. Okay? With that, I will adjourn and give everybody about 10 minutes to the regular meeting.
Need a motion to adjourn or what?
No, not for a study session.
Thank you.